Six thirty. I'm gonna start. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Before we start our meeting, I'll remind everyone, we are both live streaming on YouTube, as well as we have a Zoom link if individuals would like to join in via Zoom. You can do so. The link can be found on the Select Board Agenda, which can be found on the Camden website, under Select Board, under Meetings, and under the Packet or Agenda. In terms of operation, as I always remind everyone, the people on Zoom, the means of communicating with the Board are twofold. One, individuals who are here, please raise your hand to be recognized, make a comment to the Board, or make a comment on an agenda item. That's the only way to get in this. Similarly, on Zoom, if you would like to participate, you know, the preferred option is to raise your hand so we can try to identify you and bring you on to the, as a participant, to make comments or ask questions. Please do not use the chat function. The only mechanism is the one that I just mentioned for communication to be fair to those who are here in person and those who are here electronically. With that, we will enter our published agenda. The first item is public input on non-agenda items. And Ms. Cottle-Johnson, would you please come to the podium? And I already introduced you, so.
Nancy Cottle-Johnson, resident of Pearl Street.
I'm sorry. If we could have only one conversation in the room, if we can only have one conversation at a time, it would be helpful. If you need to confer, you can do it outside.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nancy?
Okay. So I'm here to talk about the trees, Camden's trees, and to announce that we're going to celebrate Arbor Day again this coming Monday, the sixteenth, at one P. M. After a two-year pause due to COVID, it's interesting that the state, last statewide ceremony was, we hosted it in Camden, you might remember, at the library. And so they've also had a two-year pause and are resuming the ceremonies on Monday, this coming Monday. So by proclaiming Arbor Day, which Bob did last month, and celebrating it, we'll again qualify for the Tree City USA Recertification. And this year, because of the great effort that's being undertaken by the town led by Dave St. Laurent to plant so many street trees, we will likely qualify for a Tree City Growth Award, which is quite prestigious. And that'll be next May. So.
Nancy, how many trees again? I didn't quite get the number. How many trees again, did you say?
Well, they've ordered fifty.
Thank you.
Yes, he initiated that. And there's also been a new group of volunteers that have gradually assembling, who are going to work with finding locations to plant trees in Camden. So it's a pretty exciting time. So I've done this now for about twenty-seven years. And it's, I wanted to turn it over to somebody else. I was ready to do that several years ago, but nobody stepped forward. And then I was here for the Pearl Street meeting last week. And after the meeting, Allison said, I want to show you something. And she walked off to the town office and came back with two big binders. You want to show? These are the, these are the twins. These are my binders, which match the town binders. Yes. From the Community Force Management Plan, which Doug and I wrote for the town back in nineteen ninety-five, and the Storm Disaster Management Plan, which we wrote in ninety-seven for the town, and which have been sitting on my library shelves ever since. So when Allison came and showed them to me, and I knew she'd been really excited about it, I thought that the right person had arrived to pass it on to. So Allison is going to be our new Tree City and Arbor Day Coordinator, if everyone will agree. Yes. She's just right for it. She's, she's deep into information like I am, and I'm sure she'll do nice press releases and Arbor Day celebrations.
I mean, I think it'd be pretty hard to actually equal what you've done. But the fact that you cut this one for so many years, and, I mean, the stuff that you can ask Nancy about almost any tree in town. And I have many times when there's been a threat of cutting one of them down, and you can say, Nancy, tell me about this. For instance, the Schwedler maple in the Mechanic Street parking lot here was in danger. And I said, Nancy, what do you think? Is this, you know, should we keep this tree, or should they replace it with some different ones? And Nancy pulled out her binders and had all the newspaper articles from, what was it, like the nineteen ninety? She knew exactly when the tree was planted. She knew who had sponsored it, who had watered it. It's really been a tremendous service to the town for all these years, so.
Well, I'll still be here to ask about things. Yeah, I'm glad you're gonna do it. So this year, you know, I always cook up an Arbor Day thing, and this year, I mentioned it, we decided to have the date, May sixteenth. It needs to happen during Maine's Arbor Week, which is the third full week in May, which coincides with the state Arbor Week. And so I thought, well, treekeepers could donate some trees. That's our tree care company in Camden. So we've had these ugly trees on Pearl Street, I don't know if you've noticed, on Park Street, rather, after you turn off onto Park for Route One. And they're sugar maples, which have been defaced by Central Main power, and pretty much destroyed by salt plowing, because sugar maples don't like salt. There's one dead tree left. And so I offered to the town through Mark that if the town would take down the dead tree, treekeepers would contribute three pretty large, three-inch caliber crab apples to that space. And so you accept it. And that's what we're going to do next Monday, is plant them. They're arriving tomorrow from New Hampshire.
So you'll be meeting at the TD Bank parking lot on Monday?
At one o'clock.
At one P. M.
Right. And we'll plant the trees. And Allison will be there, right, Allison?
Yes.
And Mark has agreed to repacclamation. And Dave will be speaking about this wonderful tree initiative he and the volunteers have put together also.
Thank you. And again, Nancy, as I said, I think two years ago, the library, when we had the celebration of Arbor Day.
We had the statewide celebration.
Yeah. And, you know, your, your contribution over decades has been phenomenal and appreciated and will never be forgotten by the Town of Camden.
You're welcome. I want to add one quick thing.
Please.
After deciding to plant those trees, I keep a lot of files and clippings, and I was going through some, starting them, and I came across this letter written by Marjorie Colace. I don't know if she still lives in Camden, in two thousand seven, August, talking about the horrible, horrible trees that were on Park Street. And could somebody please get rid of them?
Been around for a while, huh?
Yeah. And I don't know, some of you will probably remember, the most recent person, I think, that came to a Select Board meeting and complained about those trees and the slow, miserable death that they were dying, was Mark Haskell, who isn't with us anymore. But when Nancy said that this is where she wanted to plant the trees, it was just, I just thought, oh, what a perfect thing. Because I'm sure you and Mark weren't aligned on every single thing. But, you know, you both had that focus of meeting these trees.
That same thing. We want to have a nice gateway for Camden and for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks for coming in. Thanks for all you've done. Again.
I have something for Allison.
Oh, yeah. Oh, good.
So Allison, this is for you. Oh, now it's official. Yes. Oh, thank you, Nancy. That's, that's an oak tree with the provenance. It's from the oldest tree in Camden on Richard's property, which is in our backyard, two hundred twenty-five years or so old. And that's one of the baby trees.
Oh, thank you so much.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Nancy. You'll have to show me where.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks for all you've done. Thank you so much.
And you can tap those up. Yes.
Do we have any other public comments? Tom, I can't see the lights on. I saw you. I saw it. I outlined your head. I apologize.
We're gonna drop them. It's gonna be, it's gonna be like a chop. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Go ahead, Tom.
Tom Roth, Camden resident. The decision to destroy or to keep Montgomery Dam is a momentous decision for our town. Our goal as members of the Save the Dam Falls Committee has been and continues to be to offer the citizens of Camden a voice in whether or not to destroy the dam. We carefully researched the process to lawfully petition the Select Board, and we followed the letter and intent of that law. To date, you, the Select Board and Town Manager, have not presented a range of options for the dam, or even offered a public discussion that included preserving the dam. In fact, you have acted on the opposite extreme and unlawfully denied the opportunity for citizens to speak at the ballot box. On April fifth, you denied lawful citizen petitions to vote on the issue. What is our recourse in the face of such anti-democratic and unlawful activity? We have checked the Town Charter for our recourse, and we find that both the Town Charter and Maine State Law spell out our course of action. According to the Town Charter, which repeats what is written in the Maine State Law, our recourse is to call a town meeting. We are authorized to call a town meeting under the Town Charter Section one point three point two. We think it is a shame that the Select Board feels it needs to meet in secret on this issue. We assume that the executive session at the end of tonight's meeting, following the Maine State Law, MRS four oh five six E, will be about this issue. We are willing to meet anytime with the Select Board to make the process as smooth as possible, and including discussing putting the article on the warrant in November, rather than calling a special town meeting.
Thank you, Tom. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Anybody else's public comment before we, please?
Just about three minutes. Just about water.
Would you please introduce yourself?
I'm Roger Akeley. I live on Eight Cross Street.
Thank you.
We've all heard the expression, water flows downhill. It's almost a joke, but also a handy reminder about how the world works. And some people still aren't sure it's true, and some of them appear to sit on the Camden Select Board. The reason I know this is due to the constant drumbeat from certain Select Board members, that the Montgomery Dam must be removed to prevent flooding, especially in the future from a hundred-year storms or storms that we haven't even seen yet. Last Halloween, we had a good test case, a hundred-year storm or something close to it. We had hundreds of flooded basements, and Goose River Golf Course was half underwater. But at Ground Zero, the Smiling Cow, which shares real estate with a Magana cook at the Montgomery Dam, wasn't flooded. It did have a damp floor. Water flows downhill. Last Halloween, uh, excuse me, Montgomery Dam passed the water through the harbor, just as it has for eighty years, and as predecessors did earlier than that. The water at the dam could not flow back up to Main Street at much higher elevation. It followed the course of least resistance into the Camden Harbor. Water flows downhill. I'm here to ask two things from you today, Select Board members. Number one, disconnect talk of the Montgomery Dam with a specter of flooding, present or future. The dam is not a high wall that prevents discharge into the bay. It just controls the flow to an elevation, seven and a half feet below Main Street. I have talked with engineer Michael Burke, Burke, and read the Interfluv Report, both of which reinforce my belief that the Montgomery Dam is absolutely not a flooding threat. The second thing would be to disconnect the discussion of Montgomery Dam from your reasonable aims for river resiliency. The Interfluv Report could have been concluded with many options, and you can make adjustments to the existing options. You chose the wrong option and are making the wrong arguments and defending it. Our two-hundred-and-fifty-year-old ecosystem behind Montgomery Dam is just fine. If it isn't, tell us why exactly, not in generalities found in the Interfluv Report. I would also ask you again, almost done, about the extensive and well-considered recommendations in your master plan, the Camden Master Plan, things that need your support and attention. The plan mentions the need to repair Montgomery Dam and suggests that it be nominated for the National Register of Historic Places. As you know, this official plan was submitted by the Camden Select Board to the state. Finally, please work with the appropriate committees and residents of Camden to nominate the Montgomery Dam for the National Register, and determine how best to obtain the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars needed for its repair. You'll receive a lot of goodwill and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being so timely. Appreciate it very much. Any other comments in the public? I can't see who's back there. Oh, I, no, there wasn't a hat, Eric. It's just the sunlight from that window there. I saw a head, but then a hand, that's all I saw. Eric, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm Eric King. It's from Camden. I'm not sure whether it's on the agenda today. I looked to see what was on the agenda. I didn't see it. But it has to do with a Sardanville Superstore, it's a kiosk for Camden Department of Landings. I'm opposed to having a kiosk there for, for, for many reasons, and I'll just state a few.
But this is an agenda item later in our agenda, so.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll hold back.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Just want to be efficient, that's all. Thank you very much. With that, I didn't see any of the hands. We'll move, did I? Oh, Randy?
I have a move as an officer here. Can I take a minute?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I didn't see a hand, Randy.
I was waiting. I'm short.
These two of us.
Be quick. Kevin Littlefield is our newest officer. Kevin comes to us by way of Waldo County, where he was a patrol corporal. He's gone on twelve years of experience. He was with the Sheriff's Office. Kevin has just completed a month of accident reconstruction training, so we hope within the next six to eight months, we're gonna have an in-house accident reconstruction specialist. They're few and far between, hard to get, so.
Then we hope for no crashes.
We hope for no crashes. But when we have those serious crashes, we'll have somebody in-house that can do those.
I see. I see.
Kevin, if you've got anything you'd like to say? Just wanted to put a name to the face, so you like.
Oh, I'm glad you did, Randy. It's very important.
I'd like to say I have no words, but most people know I have plenty of words. Thank you, Randy, for having me here. This is a wonderful town. I've known that for years. I grew up in Northport, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to come down here and work. And it's been nothing but great since I've been down here, since February. So I look forward to finishing it. I've got twelve more years till I can retire, so.
Well, take it, take it slow.
My goal is to outlast Randy.
Take it slow.
That's on the day. It might be quicker than you think.
Everybody's goal, to outlast Randy. Well, welcome.
If I hear correctly, that you came from the Waldo County Sheriff's Department? So that's great. Doesn't it usually happen the other way, where we lose people to the sheriff?
He'd have his own car to come here. I mean, that's.
Wow.
What, what was it about this that?
It's, it's a beautiful little town. I was looking for a change of pace, so.
Well, that's great.
Just turned to the south and got a different vehicle and heads out.
Here's a serious welcome to you and your family.
Thank you.
If you have any problems here, and we'll.
Yeah.
We have no problems. Wow.
For a few more months.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Randy. Thank you. Well, we want to item two, which is the approval board minutes for both April fifth and April nineteenth. We'll take the fifth first. No, I shouldn't have said that one. Yeah. That's not gonna, we'll address.
We don't usually do that.
We'll address the fifth first.
I have no, no corrections that I've seen, so I'll make a motion that we approve April fifth, board, board minutes for April fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
My second.
Motion made the second. Any comments or discussion? Not seeing any others in favor? Four zero. Thank you. To the fifteenth, nineteenth, Mark, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion. I have no corrections for April nineteenth, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the board minutes for April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
My second.
Motion made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you. We have a, what's up? Sorry. Did somebody say something? I have, we have an item four. It's our consent agenda, which is kind of long, but I'm gonna go through them one by one, just so everybody understands them.
If you can do the public hearing, number three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, Mark. I'm just rushing ahead too fast here. Item number three, public, that's what we have Mark here for, with the white shirt and bow tie. Public hearings for liquor licenses for application of saltwater LLC doing business as Salt Wharf at Three Wayfar Drive for a new Class A restaurant liquor lounge liquor license. The purpose of a, a public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to comment on the matters at hand, for, against, or just to speak to them. I will open up this public hearing with asking any from the public who wants to comment. When all the public has made comment, I will, I will terminate the public hearing portion and revert, revert to the decision by the Select Board. The, the Select Board, we will not hear any more public input at that point unless a Select Board member has a question of anybody who has spoken prior to, in, in the public session. So to that end, does anybody here would like to speak to this application of Salt Wharf? Now seeing any, I will close the public hearing portion and revert to decision discussion by the Select Board. Mark?
I just have one question. I noticed in the application that, Chief, you have not signed off on the paperwork yet. Is that because it's not?
I called Janice yesterday. I said she could put a video signature on it.
Oh, okay. I didn't see it in the paperwork. Okay, just checking.
Good catch, Mark.
So other than that, I'll make a motion that we approve the application of Salt Wharf, LLC DBA Salt Wharf at Three Wayfar, Wayfarer Drive for new Class A restaurant lounge liquor license.
My second.
Motion made the second. Any discussion? Alls in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Now, I'll go through the consent agenda, see if I can get through it. On the consent agenda, we have a number of items. The first of which is the standard designation of the registrar of voters' office hours for the upcoming June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two annual town meeting and nomination of election warden. The second item is the counter-signature of the annual meeting warrant for the five-town community school district budget referendum and MSAD twenty-eight budget referendum. C is approval of new vitler and lodging licenses for only two. We are not addressing Norenbegat, and as, as printed, we are only addressing Harbor Dogs at one public landing in Salt Wharf at Three Wayfar Drive, two only on item C. The fourth item is a bid award for the Fuel Depot decommissioning of public works. Basically, this is a replacement of the tanks and equipment at a fuel depot there. The proposal is for the amount of twenty thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars for that work.
Not replacement, removal.
Removal, I meant removal. I'm sorry, removal. Thank you, Audra. And that, that funding is dictated in the packet, will come out of the reserve funds, requested of the reserve funds of the town budget. Item E and F, both were addressed last night at a workshop, last evening at a workshop by the Select Board, in discussing the snowball budget and the wastewater budget. The approval of the FY twenty-three snowball budget will be for a revenue of one million two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. The expenses would be for one million two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eighty-seven dollars. The wastewater budget is a, it's a budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three will is one million eight hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, which results in a recommended wastewater rate of nine dollars and thirteen cents per hundred cubic feet. The item G is the approval of the renewal of the farmer's market license for the tannery. Item H would be to embellish a little here, is the appointed Select Board liaison for Trust Advisory Committee and the Investment Committee, it should be written as. In the past, Ms. Jenna Lookner was representative on both of those, I recall. And obviously, she's no longer on the Select Board, so we are proposing that Sophie Romanah would take the position of Select Board Liaison for both Trust Fund Advisory and Investment Committees. Lastly, the approval of Timothy Hall for a master drain layer license. So with that, are there any objections to the items on the consent agenda?
No.
Not hearing any of those items are hereby adopted. To our list of action items, the first we have is a, it's, it's a what?
Do we not vote on the consent agenda?
No.
No, just adopt.
Unless you want me to take it off, and we could.
No, 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 no. I'm just, you know, it's, we don't use it that often that I actually memorize the rules.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
That's why I was asking. I was not.
That's a good question. The action, the first was the, we had previously tabled the approval of the collective bargaining agreement for the police union contract. Randy, do you want I to address that to the board, please?
I'll have Wes come up. Wes is the.
Absolutely, absolutely.
This is John Stewart, and I think Paul Thompson is joining us by Zoom.
Oh.
Okay.
Yep, he's there.
And.
I don't want him. I don't want him.
Okay, that's why I disappeared.
Should be, yeah.
These are the updated budgets, right?
They're good. There he is.
There's always that moment where it feels like you've kicked them out rather than.
Is he there?
He, I see him on, he's muted, and no video. There he is.
There's Paul. Evening, Paul.
Good evening.
Good evening, Paul.
So I'm sure you all have it in your packet, the collective bargaining agreement that we're gonna vote on tonight. Just a little history with our collective bargaining unit. We've always been very fortunate that we have a great working relationship with the officers in our department, the members of that collective bargaining unit. I think this is my fourth contract since I've been police chief, that we have been able to, the bargaining unit meets with me, they give me, we talk some hypotheticals of what they might want. of what they might want, what the town might want. We hammer it up pretty much in our office, and then I will send it off to Audra. Audra and I will meet, and, you know, after we've had a chance to talk and the union has a chance to talk, then we get together and have a meeting here. By being able to do that, we have saved a lot of money on bringing outside resources in to do these contracts. I have to say that our bargaining unit always comes with a well-thought-out proposals, and, you know, they're never over the top. I remember back in the days where...
You probably sat on some of those?
It used to get quite contentious. We've never had that. These officers work hard for the town. They do a great job, and I have no issue at all with approving this contract as written, and I recommend that it be accepted by the board. If you have any questions of me or Wes is representing the union, or Paul can answer them.
Yeah, Wes and Paul, feel free to make any comment if you'd like at this point. You're here.
Pretty much.
Wes, can you want to add? Wes?
No, I think it was a pretty easy negotiation. You know, what we were asking for was stuff to retain and recruit officers. Some of the... I think some of the factors of us hiring Kevin was some of the things that we're getting in this contract, and, you know, when a lot of the agencies around us are offering big sign-on bonuses and take-home cars and all this stuff, it's, you know, we have a lot of younger officers. It's hard to retain them, or... So that's what we kind of worked on is the retention and recruitment of new officers so that, you know, we're not having a revolving door, so.
And I'll throw in there that we did talk about the sign-on bonuses for people coming in, which is very important. I mean, our young officers could leave here tomorrow and go sign on for $20,000 somewhere, and the union really wanted to get that in so we can recruit new talent. How I have framed our sign-on bonuses is the officers will get that over a period of time. It's not lump sum.
I see.
So if they come, they earn it in an hourly rate for five years.
I see.
So I think that is the best way, because if you get somebody comes and we pay them $20,000, two years later, they go to the next places paying $20,000. If they decide to leave, we have paid them up to that point, and I think that makes a lot of sense. And the union was great, and we all agreed on that was a very good way to go. Paul, have you got anything you'd like to add?
You know, it's just... We're just trying to stay competitive with the area. Not everyone knows that it's getting harder and harder to find officers. It's incredibly difficult to recruit younger officers, and it's hard to keep them, and that's for statewide, national, really. So, you know, we just... We're looking towards the future. We want to, you know, keep this town protected and safe and just do our best to get people, good people, here to do so.
Actually, Sophie raised her hand first.
I have one question. I noticed that you have a grievance process for officers, and I'm wondering if the data is available and if you have, like, outside reviewers of the grievance process and how they're resolved?
We have steps outlined in the grievance process that we have to follow. That is the initial grievance. They meet with me. I give an answer. Then it can get appealed to Audra, and then it goes further. If there's no resolution, it would go to arbitration.
And do we... So you keep stats?
I can't think of a grievance off the top of my head that we've had.
Yeah, I mean, in the time that I've been here...
Anything that we've had, it was... It never went past that stage.
I think that we were able to resolve it before it ever even got close to arbitration.
But so... But those grievances, you keep track of them? You haven't... You know how...
I mean, we have copies of all the grievances that we...
No, but what I'm interested in is the number, and how do we compare to similar towns? How do we... Are we better? Are we... Is there something we need to improve? And I, you know, I'm just curious.
Like I said, I think I've had one grievance in 10 years.
Is that something that MAP might be able to give us data on?
I'm sure Dan Felkow could tell us how many times he's had a grievance in 11 years.
Yeah. Well, no, I just mean maybe...
Summary?
Like the data that Sophie's looking for.
For me, it's always interesting to see, you know, is it going up? Is it going down? Is it flat? Is there something we need to think about to improve?
You think of any?
I am never satisfied, so...
When you're asking about grievances, are you asking about, like, comparative to other departments? Because most of our grievances is either a violation of policy or something like somebody didn't follow the right union policy or something, and that's... So it's an argument of discipline or something that way. It's not...
People aren't going to be able to hear you very well if you're, like, on YouTube if you're not right next to the microphone.
Okay. So just wondering if it was your grievance... When you say grievance, what are you referring to?
At the beginning of the union contract, there's a grievance process.
Right.
But it's the... So it's a grievance process within the union or with the police department?
Within the union.
Same, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what I'm interested in, how many complaints are logged in, grievances are logged in. I'm glad to hear that none goes to arbitration, so it means that we're on top of this.
We... Ours have always been settled either by withdrawal of the grievance or by mutual consent.
Again, they emphasize that you're supposed to be close to the microphone.
They want to hear you.
The mics are a little touchy at distance.
What Fiona Per has told us. They're not like room mics. They're...
And I'm not... I don't... It's really, I'm looking at just data.
We could see what MAP has for data.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, if, like, MAP could just give, like, straight numbers.
Yeah, I can reach out and see.
That would be good.
When I come into work this week.
Yeah, if you could email that, if you get anything to me and Audra, that'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
If you have a question.
Thank you.
I guess I'm expecting that this isn't anything that certainly is going to be changed tonight or probably anytime in the future, but the thing that I've heard sometimes from officers that move on to other things is frustration with the seniority clauses and that...
They have a junior officer who just got hired on who has a preferred shift.
So you kind of knew where I was going with this? Is that because everybody's working...
I think I know the one person who might have complained to you about that.
And in general, I think members of the public too wonder, you know, many of us are involved in things where seniority is less, plays less of an important role, and there's more of a performance-based...
Yeah. Well, that's all negotiated in the contract by the members of the union who want scheduling by seniority.
You're not a member of the union, are you?
No.
So maybe, I mean, it would be helpful to just hear from... I mean, I understand that that's the reason for the union is sort of the protection that it affords, and I can certainly recognize that working for municipality, there's that kind of, like, changing political climate or whatever that nobody really, nobody wants to be a victim of, and there is potential for there to be, like, unfair things that could happen. And so the senior... I can see why the seniority thing is important, but looking for opportunities to involve performance-based incentives rather than just seniority-based incentives seems like... I mean, it's considered a best practice in, like, every private organization, rather than just the longer you're here, the more privileges you have.
I think every police department you'll look at has seniority-based scheduling. We have two senior officers now that are working overnight shifts by choice because they have that option to do that, because it works better for their families.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why Kevin was able to start on a preferred 4:2 shift.
I see.
Sure. I mean, just, you know, in general, you want to be able to give... Wouldn't you, as a police chief, want occasionally, and I'm sure, to be able to reward or incentivize performance? Is there... Are there opportunities for promotion probably, right, to a different... That would be based more on performance than...
Promotions are based on...
So when I first started, the town, the PD, actually worked three months of days, and then you'd go three months of mid-shift and three months of overnight. So that way everybody got a taste of the pie, per se. And the issue is, a lot of people, we all got together and were... It was just too hard to go from working at 8 o'clock at night to 6:00 in the morning and then turning around three months later. You just got in a sleep routine of sleeping during the day, and now you have to go to a day shift where you have to be up at 5:00 to be to work at 6:00, and we all voted on it and said that we didn't want that. And the other thing that we, in this contract, is we have increased our evening shift differential to hopefully get some of our senior people that maybe now monetarily will want to work evenings, which would give some of our new guys a chance to work day shift if it was available, so.
That's helpful.
I was punished when I came to work here. We worked 4:02 one week, 5:03 the next, and 10:08 the next week.
Oh.
We rotated every week.
Wow.
I don't think I slept.
So sometimes that kind of mentality of people that have been here for a long time will kind of perpetuate that unnecessarily and say, "Well, I did it," and blah, blah, blah. And so it... But Wes's explanation was really helpful.
We were happy to get off that when we had a chance.
I have another question.
I think one of the circumstances, when you have a very small department, there's just not a lot of places for seniority, and you're obviously going to lose people that want to move up as they move to other departments, larger departments, other situations. I would think that there's not much you can do about that. You can't have a department of all chiefs.
True. And I don't know of any that do it any differently than by seniority.
The one thing that I'm delighted to see is that there's no contention in the deal that you have a contract where people are happy to stay where they are, and we've seen a reverse from a sheriff's department to a police department, and I would think that would have to do...
It was grateful once.
Yeah.
The other thing our officers are able to do is swap shifts.
Mm-hmm.
And we allow shift swapping, so say Wes is 4:2 on the sergeant shift. If he needed to switch with a day sergeant, detective sergeant, we allow that swapping within the schedule as long as it works out for both parties, so.
So the agreement... It's beyond the shift, you know, issue. I think one thing that I really like in the collective bargaining agreement that we're hoping to bring more into the town's personnel policy is that there are incentives for further education and training, financial incentives, and that's... It's been really great for Randy because, you know, you have certain officers who might be really interested in, you know, gaining certain skills or learning, you know, certain, you know, specializations within the department, and that's good for the department. It's good for the officer, and, you know, it enables us to sort of, you know, reward people who are pursuing further education and training, and I think that that's something that, you know, Dave St. Laurent would like to see in Public Works and Dave Bolstridge in Wastewater and Beth, you know, sees with her staff in Parks and Recs. So I think that, you know, that's a really positive thing about the collective bargaining agreement, that it's good for the town, it's good for the department, it's good for the individual officers, and, you know, it's one area where we're able to do things that are a little bit different to incentivize people who want to, you know, gain additional skills.
So one of the things that I started doing not too long ago is, in our supervisors, before they become supervisors, anybody with five years post-academy experience is offered the line supervisor training.
Oh.
So I've been sending them to the FBI LIDA trilogy of training, which is some of the best... I mean, you go there and there's captains, there's deputy chiefs, there's lieutenants. We're sending some of our patrol officers to do that. So they are trained at supervisor level when a position opens up within the department.
They're ready.
We'll offer our officers that have three years of experience post-academy a chance to become field training officers or patrol training officers. So we're trying to get them in... If you start them out as field training officers, they start thinking like supervisors.
Sure.
You give them the management training, they start thinking more and operating more like supervisors, and all I can say is it has to reduce the liability because they're always thinking at the supervisor level, even though that they haven't gained that rank yet.
So the only other thing that just always kind of jumps out at me is the need to mention that the employer shall not require that an employee take a polygraph or any other form of lie detector test, and that's not something that I see in every union contract.
It's not in every union contract.
Why is that so important for this one?
I will let the union speak.
And do we have a similar policy for not using those with the general public? And...
We use polygraphs as part of investigations all the time. We offer people the opportunity to take a polygraph if they'd like.
And so doesn't that just seem like an interesting disconnect?
That is something that was negotiated years ago, and it has been in that contract since I was a patrol officer in 1989.
I'm not questioning how long it's been in there, but it's like when you say, "Oh, we're going to use this as a tool for, in our work, but we don't ever want it to be used with us under any circumstances." It just kind of was like, "Oh, yeah."
Trust me, there have been times over the years that I would have liked to have been able to have used that.
Yep.
But the staff I have now, I don't even worry about it.
Would there be a big problem with just taking that out? I'm not suggesting that we implement a random polygraph test, but it would just...
It would be a question the union would have to answer.
Yep.
So as far as a polygraph, before you can go to the criminal justice academy, you have to take a polygraph.
Oh, my gosh.
You're required pre-academy to take a polygraph. I believe the language is written so post-academy, if there's an issue, you're not required, but before you can become an officer, you are required to take one. And I'm not sure why it's been in there forever, but...
It's considered a quite useful tool by law enforcement in general.
Yes, and at the same time, it's completely unreliable.
Well, I've seen lots of different things, but, I mean, it just seems like we should be consistent, but...
I wouldn't go so far as to say it's unreliable.
Well, it's unconclusive a lot of the time, right?
It can't be... It cannot be used in court.
It's not a fail proof. I mean, DNA has a 99% whatever.
Right.
Polygraph, they don't. They simply don't.
There are people that we interview that are happy to take a polygraph because...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I...
It's a tool that we use for investigation.
I'm not an armchair detective. That's not what I mean, but I do read a lot of evaluations, and I read evaluations on all kinds of stuff, and it's always striking to me that we use a tool that... Whose probative value is questionable.
Mark?
I guess I would be an armchair detective. I read a lot of detective novels, although I've experienced other examples of law enforcement. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the collective bargaining agreement with the police union.
Yeah, a second.
Motion made. Second. Any discussion?
I mean, I just feel like that should just be taken out. Now we are hearing that it's actually a useful thing to use sometimes, so why are we... I just, I can't understand why we would keep that in. It doesn't seem like anybody really needs it to be in there. The only person that would be administering these would be Randy, probably, so it's not as if...
We have to hire our own.
Right, I know, but you'd be making the decision. I don't think there's, like, a great danger that we're going to be unfairly...
I think that's going to open the contract up for renegotiation.
It would. It would. Any other comments? Alls in favor? Opposed. Three to one passes. Thank you so much, and good...
Thank you.
Keep it going. Thank you, Paul. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And onward and upward, or whatever we want to call it. He could, so... Yeah, we'll get the boards to sign tonight, and you can sign whenever. All right. Onward to the next item on the action items is the approval of the revocable license agreement for Kathleen Murray-Alain at 49 Pearl Street for underground power and utilities in the public right of way. Board? Need the packages?
I have not... I think we discussed this already, right?
Yeah, I thought we did.
Well, they have, I believe.
But we discussed a couple of these, but it wasn't this one.
A couple of these, and the only... I think the only issue... I don't remember any issue because I don't have any issue.
I don't either.
Who reviews this in terms of staff to determine that it's okay?
Who would it?
And it's okay. I just didn't see the, like, "Yes, I think it's okay."
Oh, you mean from...
I assume that it's not our job to review the merits of this, that somebody...
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't send you one that we... Probably. I mean, it's a little different than, like, with, you know, like, a liquor license or a permit.
Okay.
So, yeah, there isn't really a departmental sign off.
I just saw that this one's not on the consent agenda, and so it makes me feel like I'm supposed to think harder about it.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. I mean, unless Dave has any additional comments, I don't know about it.
No, it's actually all okay. So this is a new home. It's just past Park Street on Pearl Street, and instead of putting, placing a pole on the... It would be the opposite side of Elm Street, so I would call it the west side, per se, northwest side.
No, the east.
The mechanic street side.
The mechanic street side. It's going to stay on the other side. We're going to go under the road, and then it'll go to the home, and that's good in a way because we're putting a sidewalk on that side. We don't really want a utility pole there. We're actually going to be doing that further down for another residence that has a pole on the other side. So this is a good thing. It's a good time to do it. The road's going to be reconstructed. It'll all be placed on the ground per the spec, and... Run a conduit and pull it. Yeah, and it's going to be... It should have concrete in it, too, covering it. Yep.
And it has no impacts on the trees around? I'm just...
No.
I'm just...
No, everything's clear in that area.
No, but I mean, for me, it's important.
We should tell them they have to take the tree, though.
That's fine, please.
No impact on the trees.
Mark had a comment.
Oh, I was just going to make a motion.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
That's okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the revocable license agreement for Kathleen Murray-Alain at 49 Pearl Street for underground power and utilities in the public right-of-way.
A second.
Motion made in second, discussion? None? All's in favor? Four zero, thank you. The third item is the approval of the transfer of the remainder windjammer license agreement, which I believe is one year if I'm not correct, for the Lewis B. French windjammer to new owners Rebecca Wright and Nathaniel, I hope I get this right, Sigovin.
Very good.
I almost said Sigavant, but that's not, because I just came from France. But please, if you'd like to comment, sure. And please introduce yourself, not that we know, not that we know who you are.
We'll get to hear it.
I'm Nathaniel Seguin of the Lewis R. French.
The B. R.
R, yeah, of the windjammer. And yeah, we'd like to keep that dock space going forward.
For the one year remaining on the former owner's license agreement. Yeah, that's pretty clear. Because I think all the windjammer licenses expire in 2023.
Yep, they're all on the same schedule.
All, and the day sailors are also.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Anything else you'd like to say about the fun of sailing ships?
Talk about your new ownership and what you'd like to do.
What you're going to do with it?
We're pretty much going to be doing the same thing Garth and Jenny were doing, which is windjammer trips, three to six days typically, starting the May 27th for Memorial Day weekend and then going until October 8th this year, so.
It's a long season.
Yeah, it's a long season. We might extend it if it continues to get warmer, which is, but once it starts getting cold, people don't really want to be on a boat.
Thank you for coming.
Both you and Rebecca are captains.
Rebecca is the captain.
Rebecca is, oh, so I'm sorry, because it's offered, oh, Captain Rebecca Wright and Nathaniel. I thought you were both captains.
Uh-uh.
Well, more power to her.
Amen.
Great.
Good luck.
Mark?
Allison, I-
I'm sorry.
No, I just said good luck. I didn't mean luck.
I will make a motion that we approve the transfer of the remainder windjammer license agreement for Lewis R. French to new owners Rebecca Wright and Nathaniel.
Siguan.
Seguin.
Siguan.
Siguan.
Siguan, like spango. Siguan. Yeah, you should.
We'll get it right eventually.
What they said.
A second.
Motion made in second, a further discussion.
Poor guy, can you?
All's in favor? Four zero, congratulations and good luck.
Well, thank you.
The next item is the approval of use of winter maintenance reserve funds for repairs to a sidewalk plow and a snow blower purchase. Audra, do you want to introduce this or does Dave, I'm not sure how you want to?
I'm happy for Dave to speak to it, but I-
We're throwing Dave under the bus. Go ahead.
There should be a whole bunch of-
You're throwing him under the sidewalk plow. That would be worse. So-
Take your polygraph.
I saw him, I swear.
So the Prenoth sidewalk plow was having troubles about mid-season.
Yes.
And it was pulling to the right, but we didn't realize when we had it brought into the mechanics at the people that repair that, Chadwick Bay Ross, that it had some undercarriage problems. And once they realized that it not only had steering problems, but had undercarriage problems, we realized it was going to be out of commission for almost two months because they had to replace basically all the bearings, the track adjusters, the steering. It was, it was in bad shape apparently. You know, it was, the way that that piece of equipment's designed, it's all self-contained, so you really can't see any of these components. So we knew we were going to be in a little bit of trouble with keeping the sidewalks maintained, so we authorized the emergency repair of the sidewalk plow, but at the same time, we contacted a company and got an attachment for our WL-32, small, little articulating mini loader and got a blower for that so that we could continue with maintaining the sidewalks while the other machine was being repaired. So the two, the two requests are for the repairs to the Prenoth sidewalk machine, which is a very specialized piece of equipment, and that ended up being $7,752. And the purchasing of the Provence P680 48W1 snow blower, that was, that's an attachment for our WL-32 Whacker Newson loader for $3,220 for a grand total of $10,972.77.
Just in summary, Dave, what, sorry?
Pen, please. Pen, pen, pen.
Oh, pen.
Thank you.
You scared me for a minute. The total machinery we have to work on sidewalks right now is-
So we have three pieces of equipment. We have a bombardier.
Right.
We have a sidewalk machine.
Right.
Which is a track-driven machine.
Right.
We have the Prenoth, which is another track machine. The difference between the two is the Prenoth is kind of has a steering wheel and the bombardier has levers, but the steering wheel is really just an exaggerated lever system.
Right.
So that was what was going on wrong with the, with the steering on it. I actually tried it out. It was, it was difficult to keep this thing going in a straight line.
Ruined the sidewalk on Chestnut.
Well, it was very diff-
Well, that has some different-
It was very difficult to run at one point in time.
Yeah, because now there's a, there's a-
On the side?
There's a groove, there's a groove, yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming-
I'd love you to try it sometime.
I'd love to.
Please. It sounds fun.
So back to-
Said the same thing.
Back to the summary again.
Two pieces of equipment that we do most of the work with is the bombardier and the Prenoth. And then we also have a third piece of equipment that's wheel-driven and has a blower on the front, and that we do the outer routes with. So when you go down to one piece of equipment for the in-town routes, you just can't do it all. So we knew we needed to do something quickly to be able to maintain the sidewalks for the winter.
To repair, basically.
To authorize the repair and hopefully get it back in time, which we didn't. But it was luckily we purchased the blower for the WL-32 Whacker Newson. And that was what we were using to get us through the rest of the season.
So, so now you have an additional piece of equipment, which will help you next winter.
We do, yeah. And we have the Whack, we have the Prenoth, it's all been repaired and running good now.
Great.
So that's a good-
My question is, what was the total amount again?
So, so the repairs-
Is there a packet somewhere that I'm missing, sorry?
No, it's not in the packet.
No, it, yeah. Unfortunately, it's not in the packet. It should have been in the packet, but that's my fault. The, the repairs for the, for Chadwick Bay Ross were $7,752.77. That was for the repairs on the Prenoth sidewalk plow, $7,752.77. The purchasing of the blower attachment was $3,220 and that was for central equipment.
And the total is?
And the total is $10,972.77.
And regarding the budget, is this coming out of?
This is coming out of winter maintenance reserve.
Okay, that's what it says. Okay.
Well, that's exactly what it's for.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the usage of the funds for the repair of the sidewalk plow and snow blower purchase in the amount of $10,972.77.
A second.
Motion made in second, a further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just have one comment. Dave, when I saw this on the agenda, I didn't realize we had already bought the blower. And I would love that in the future, when we need to buy new equipment, that we look into electric, that I really, and I don't know if the blower is electric and I-
I would love to have an electric blower, but this is, this is a blower that runs on, runs on a gas-powered machine.
Right, so, and I get this, but I, in the future, I think, you know, when time comes to replace equipment, that, and I say this not only for, for your department, for every department in town that-
I hope they have one that's electric because it would be a lot less noisy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's better for the environment, it's one fewer engine you have to worry about.
It'd be great if they make one and I'll look into it. And I apologize for not having that in the packet, you'll have it next year.
That's important, Dave. We chastise others for not doing that. We gotta have that. And there are electric available from other states, but they're not, I don't believe they're as big as, you know, that you're using here.
The old sidewalk plow industry is real specialized and there's not a lot of it out there.
Very much so.
This was an additional piece of equipment you already had. You couldn't do something.
It's an attachment, so we can-
It's just an attachment, so it's like buying forks or a bucket loader or it's just a blower that goes on the front.
I'm just putting it out there, we have, really have to start about, start thinking about electrifying, and I know Randy does that already because he's looking at hybrid vehicles and things like that.
I'm thinking of an electric piece of equipment for next year.
Yeah, we have talked about it's, it's time, it's going to be time to replace one of our sidewalk machines, so.
Pickup truck.
And pickup truck.
F-150 electric.
That's right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Four zero, thank you very much. Item, the fifth item is the approval for a grant submission to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for the expanded stakeholder engagement and detailed design for the McGuntacook Watershed Restoration activities. Audra, do you want to describe it in brief?
Yeah, so it's, it's, this is the National Coastal Resilience Fund, so it's the same pot of money that we received a grant funding for the feasibility study for the McGuntacook River restoration. And when this funding round became available, it's a much lower match requirement. In fact, we can do all in-kind match. And one of the other sort of appealing aspects of this is a lot of the areas where we've talked about doing further investigation and further, you know, community engagement and education and outreach, this, this would be targeted towards those types of activities. So things like getting together a committee and staffing it with a consultant is all eligible for this funding.
Perfect. I don't see anything in the packet.
We don't have anything because we haven't, you know, we haven't even started. It's, this is just to get authorization from the board to prepare the grant application and submit it. June, is it the 15th, mid-June or?
I think it's June, this one's June 1st.
Oh, early June.
Because of the, did you want to explain the pipeline project aspect of this?
Yeah, so that's another aspect to this is once you've received the initial grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation and you've begun a project and they've, you know, had a chance to review it and they see it as, you know, a project with a lot of merit and potential, they'll consider you to be a pipeline or in their pipeline for additional funding. And so they actually reached out to us and said, do you want to pursue the next phase of this, which would be, you know, more detailed design, more in-depth community engagement and outreach? And we sort of explained to them where we were with everything in regards to, you know, the McGuntacook River, and they encouraged us to apply through this. So it's a much earlier application date and we'll get notification of an award of funding if we're successful much earlier.
Is there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just thinking that you're going to be on leave soon, so who's writing this and do, do we have a plan?
Yeah, I mean, this, this will sort of be linked to getting a consultant on board.
And so Interflue does a lot of the engineering.
Right.
Heard of it already.
They cannot persuade the grant.
Oh, most definitely. A lot of the justification for the grant and sort of the coastal climate context of it has already been defined in the feasibility study. And so basically, this round of funding is just to follow up on the feasibility study, which can include, you know, really anything that we feel is necessary to move forward, various options, including a lot of, of community engagement. And we did really want to make sure that we ask them a bunch of questions about like, okay, we don't want to give the impression that like everybody is on board with like a single solution here. There's, you know, definitely community desire to look at multiple options, to go back and better understand the condition of the status quo in certain, at certain sites, like, you know, we explained certain sites are more controversial than others and that, you know, would it be a problem if for some of those areas? We did need to go back and say, okay, we're going to look at, you know, a different option here. Maybe there's a different way that, they really need us to be focusing on things that increase resiliency and natural habitat options, but if there's a way to reduce the flood risk without removing the dam, that would be lovely too. So they are, they do encourage, you know, innovative options that we could come up with. So we were really upfront about that and it really felt like what we actually need to do now is exactly what they want to fund and they don't expect us to be at a stage where everybody's like, oh, yeah, we know exactly what we want to do and we all agree.
Yeah, we were, we were very clear with them that it's not something that we've got a decided path forward and that's a really important part of this is that, you know, we need resourcing to get to a point where there's some sort of, you know, understanding of a way forward and that all the work that needs to be done to get to that point. So they, they know that we're not coming into this with a consensus on the direction that this project's going to go in.
Thank you.
Mark had a question. Specifically asked the question that I think are people in the corner. There is an option or there is the ability for people to go, we want, for people, we can do some changes and stuff and possibly keep Montgomery Dam if that, that works. That's, we're not saying we need to take that out. I just, that's a question they're going to want to ask. I don't want to make sure that clear about that.
Oh, yeah, let them ask it.
Let them ask it. I think it was pretty clear that the grant gives us the opportunity to explore multiple options.
Evaluation.
An evaluation and make, and that we didn't go into those discussions saying, we know what we want to do and this grant is going to help us get to where we want to go.
I understand, I just wanted to be specific because I think that-
It's part of the process.
But the dam as it is right now isn't going to work out. And I think everybody knows that there would need to be significant changes made to it in terms of there, there have been things, for instance, asked like, well, why don't we increase the size of the gate? Or can we just decrease the, the height of the spillway? So one of the things that we would do is we would go through and we would understand what the implications of that would be, getting to a point where the town doesn't need to operate a gate, getting to the point where it could be considered more of a nature-based solution. But, yeah, I do want-
Just to be very clear, though, this will be much broader than just the Montgomery Dam. It will look at the whole.
I'm just addressing, I think they would, that's a question they want to have asked and asking on their behalf. I'm the messenger here.
We don't, we don't have answers to those questions. We're in an evaluation phase and we're going to look at all options. I understand that, Mark, but this is an evaluation phase and jumping to, yes, every, every option, I mean, feasible option will be, must be investigated.
And I mean, you know, there's a, there's a huge gap between a feasibility phase and when you actually have a shovel-ready project. And this is, this is one of many steps along the way.
Part of the process, right. Any other questions?
Not on my end. I think it's pretty clear. As long as we have somebody to write it and make sure that we don't miss the deadline, I'm-
So you have a plan to-
Yes, I'm not worried about this actually being written.
I will make a motion that we approve the grant submission to National Fish and Wildlife I will make a motion that we approve the grant submission to National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for expanded stakeholder engagement and detailed design for the McGuntacook watershed restoration, for watershed restoration.
My second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Go ahead, Ken.
My name is Ken Gross. I live in Camden and although I work at the library, I need to clarify that I'm not speaking on behalf of the library. I am concerned that this grant application seems to confirm that the select board has made a decision and a commitment to river restoration and that equals dam destruction. It seems to me that we should pause any grant applications until the town has had a chance to discuss making a commitment to preservation. You have yet to assess if there is any tolerance in town for dam destruction. You have not held any discussion of the three options in the Interflue report. You have not had so much as a show of hands on the alternatives. There has been a public survey which found that a huge majority of people would prefer to save the dam, and yet you persist in denying a hearing, a discussion, or a vote on the issue. I think you will find there is very little tolerance for dam destruction. The people will prefer a win-win situation where the waterfall will be preserved and environmental goals can be addressed. This grant is premature. You should find out if there is any support for the destruction of a town treasure before asking for money to plan its destruction. It is premature to dedicate any resources to a destructive action before you offer an alternative. Wouldn't you rather begin the planning knowing the parameters and wouldn't you rather tell the engineers what the final objectives are before they begin? I'll cut to the bottom. This, this motion should be voted down.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? In favor? Four zero, thank you very much. To the last item on the, we have to bring John Burke on, Allison.
Oh, yep.
Please, is the discussion, action, excuse me, to, regarding the pilot project for paid parking on the public landing.
Yes, and there's information in the packet that John would like.
To post.
Yeah, to make sure it's up and available for everyone that he wants to talk to.
John, thanks, Allison.
Yep, he should be.
John's there, but he's, he's muted at the moment and I see a nice picture. But, sorry about that. That's, that's okay, John.
Can you see me and hear me? I'm not sure if I'm.
I can hear very clearly. I cannot see you. We have, we have a no camera symbol on your, on your box, so your video is not transmitting.
John, would you prefer that we have the information that you gave us be the visual that you speak to?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we're doing.
That would be great. That would be great, thank you.
And we can hear you very well, John.
Okay. Well, as long as you can hear me, sorry about the video. Thank you for inviting me tonight. I, I just wanted to, you know, just give a little bit of a background in terms of the parking study that we completed earlier this year. There were a series of recommendations, as you know, related to parking and one of them being implementation of a paid parking system, given the demand that we see here in Camden for those prime spaces. So, you know, as part of that, you know, the recommendation was to have paid parking in the entire two-hour parking zone, but also the public safety building lot. And, you know, prior to implementing paid parking, some communities decided that it's prudent to, to first implement a limited trial, our pilot project to test. The paid parking concept gives an opportunity to test the equipment and the enforcement and the usage before and after and all those sort of things. But in fact, the paid park, paid a park trial in Camden was first recommended back in 1995. It was an ad hoc town parking committee that recommended that. It was included in the 2012 downtown master plan. So there's some precedent for considering such a trial. And Audra sort of asked me to put together what would make sense for what is the highest demand lot, your public landing lot by far. So, yeah, what we see here is that's part of the two-hour zone for the public landing lot. Certainly meets warrants for meter parking based on the lack of parking availability and poor turnover and poor compliance post-time limits and a high rate of employee parking in that lot.
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be showing here.
You got it, you got it.
Like just, just leave it at this or am I supposed, okay.
Sorry, yeah, I'm, I'm right at the top and, sorry about the, yeah.
Is it problem statement?
Very top. You got it, you got it.
So, so that, you know, up at the top, the problem statement, that's really what we call meter warrants. Those four items are, are all need to be checked, you know, to meet those meter warrants. And it does, it meets that, those, those conditions. So, you know, the, the additional information on the public landing lot we received from enforcement, Camden Parking Enforcement, was that there's a high degree of shuffling of cars and employ, well, first, first, there's plenty of employees using that two-hour lot, which is, you know, typically reserved for customers, short-term visitors. Some of those employees are shuffling cars every two hours, which is a violation of the town ordinance. And, you know, there's some issues as well, trying to control the schooner tag permits. There's hang tag permits that you affix to the rearview mirror. We are, we have a lot of familiarity with those in other communities. They're often very difficult to enforce. There's, there's some abuse of that. Oftentimes, they fall from the rearview mirror to the floor. If someone gets a ticket, they may have forgotten their permit or it fell to the floor. Or maybe they'll say they put it on a window. There's often things, so those tags have sort of been replaced with new technology as far as permits go. We sort of tie everything to a license plate. So, you know, what do we do to address that problem statement with a, with a pilot program? And what we're recommending is testing an integrated paid parking management solution that, that involves a solar-powered, you know, parking payment kiosk that accepts cash and credit card, be contactless, so you don't necessarily have to, to touch it. It's even more contactless because we're going to provide a pay-by-phone mobile payment app as an alternative. So instead of having to go to the pay station and use a credit card, you can simply pay by phone if you have your link, your credit card linked to your phone. And this is done, you know, all through, it's in Bar Harbor, of course, it's done all through the U.S., nothing unusual. We would also have an electronic virtual permit system. Again, back to those hang tag permits, we'd do away with physical permits. And those too would be tracked to the license plate. It would be issued a permit and your license plate is your permit. And that, that's how that, that sort of works. And then we would have wireless electronic handheld enforcement devices, which is the state-of-the-art for parking enforcement today and doing away with handwritten tickets and that sort of thing. The beauty of this integrated system is that all of these parking payments, whether they're by kiosk, mobile app, or seasonal permit, they're all tied to the license plate. So there's one common base for all of that. And they're shared in real time to the enforcement officer's handheld unit. So the officer can use an Android or an iPhone and in real time going into the public landing lot, he will see all of the payments in the lot. He'll see who paid with a permit, who paid with a credit card by a pay station, who paid by mobile app, who paid, I said, permit. So, so he'll see all that in real time, or she will see that in, in real time and be able to enforce it right there. And it, it really improves the, actually, we can go to the next page. It really improves the efficiency of the entire parking management solution. I think there's a second page there.
There is. The machine is fighting us.
Seems to be some kind of.
Lockup.
I'm going to go ahead, John, but I can.
Are you talking to the?
I can keep speaking, I can keep speaking to it.
Expected benefits?
Yeah, those expected benefits really are to move the employees out of the customer parking space. We certainly don't want that, them in the two-hour spaces as we found it in our parking counts.
Oops, lost everything. He'll come back.
Well, no, that, I mean, so you are also running the meeting, right?
Yeah, we want to do.
Good, so that's good. That didn't just.
No, I still have it.
Obviously, a very overwhelming thing for the computer. It just.
I don't know why. I can't move it either.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. One second.
You can't move it either?
No.
Oh, well, you wouldn't be able to.
No.
Oh my, okay.
Anyway, continue with the expected benefits. You mentioned the employee parking thing to potentially eliminate that, to improve parking availability and turnover, improve enforcement, because it's all available to the law enforcement officers and, and of course, decide to create a revenue source. Then it goes, there's one more paragraph here, I'm sure you're familiar, with the payback period. John, do you want to, did you address that?
I think we lost John.
In a single season typically.
Yeah.
Bar Harbor found that, of course. And, and then you can start to reinvest in, in the infrastructure there without hopefully taxing the, the general fund.
Right. Is the.
Well, that's.
I was going to question on the payback period paragraph, is $2 suggested, $2 an hour, parking from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.? Is there a limit to the number of hours?
Yep, twice. We said twice.
Yeah, there, there.
There is.
Is that, do you mean the two-hour limit? There would still be a two-hour limit.
Yeah, yeah, right. I just, yeah, that was my question. I didn't see it, I may have missed it.
Sorry, yes.
That's all right, that's all right. Just, just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
But you bring up an important, an important point about that is that the, you know, if someone thought they would only want to pay for one hour, you know, and then they get to the restaurant and they feel like they're going to stay for the second hour, they can pay remotely with their phone. They can extend from one hour to two hours. It can't go beyond the limit, but they would be able to extend their payment if they, if they knew they were, in fact, they get a, they get a warning before they expire that they're about to expire, so they can do that.
So beyond the concept of this, what decision are you looking for the board to make?
Did I just understand that we're still not going to let people park for more than two hours?
That's, that's what I heard.
I have questions.
What's your mark? But is, just to be clear, for, Alice has the same question, the recommended market rate of $2 per hour, but wouldn't, a person cannot exceed two hours parking per license plate?
Well, I guess, and that's, I think John is designing this according to our current traffic code.
Understood. You can change that. I know you can change that.
And the select board has the ability to change the traffic code, so.
Oh, the traffic code.
Yeah.
But it's also, it's also to encourage, Allison, the, the limit of two hours is to encourage people to use the public parking lots.
I understand, but.
Longer.
I thought what I heard from the presentation at the middle school was more like, that there was more of a benefit to letting the, I guess, the market dictate things. I know that, you know, the schooners have this big issue. Are we, are we, so we're still afraid that even if we make people pay, we're still afraid that the demand would be so high that people would choose to pay to be there all day? And that that would be.
John?
There is, there, you know, most communities in their two-hour, if it's a retail lot surrounded by short-term restaurants, say, most communities are either two hours in those lots or three hours. There are some, because they, because yes, there are some people who will take it all day, you know, and not be customers and willing to pay that, right? There are some communities that are exploring opening, doing away with the limits in those retail lots, but in those cases, they typically escalate the fee over time. You know, if you really want to stay in there for four hours, five hours, eight hours, then you, you pay significantly more. So I would say the vast, vast majority, it's two hours or three hours. And, and either is fine, it's really, every community feels differently about it.
One of the things to underscore here, this is, this is a pilot project. So the pilot project, we can do some what-ifs.
And I would say that the benefit of this, more than, far more than any revenue that will be collected, is the data that we'll get from it.
I agree.
And then we can.
I agree, that's why it's called a pilot project. We're not proposing a permanent installation on the landing, we're doing a test case to see how it works or if it, if it's a hand grenade with the pin pulled.
And then it would allow us to better understand how we should price this.
Right.
Because we would have the beginning of data points, we, we have zero data points right now.
Mark?
I have some questions. Number one, if somebody goes and parks for two hours and there's a limit, they can't park for longer than two hours by filling out the program, and then they leave and they come back an hour later and want to park for another two hours, is that, is it regulated by their license plate for a 12-hour period or something? What keeps people from switching spaces? That's question number one. Question number two, I've seen, I travel a lot, so I see a lot of these companies, pay-by-phone parking, Panda Passport, I believe Passport is used in Portland or maybe Boston. And I'm going to arc here for a second. One of the great things about using the freeways these days is everybody has gone to EZ Pass. And what I would like to see, if we're going to do this, can we make sure we're doing it with a company that, so you only have to have one app? I don't like having three or four different parking apps on my phone. Can we get the one that seems to be becoming the EZ Pass of, of parking? And I have to say, I'm wary about paid parking in Camden because it will change the nature of the town. I think a pilot program is probably a good idea, but I'm, I'm wary about it.
Okay, other questions?
Can we have John maybe answer some of the questions?
Oh, yeah, Mark had a question about, about the.
Switching parking spots.
Yeah, the question, John, about the person that leaves for an hour and comes back and they, can they do another two hours and the other question?
Yeah, so you, yeah, your, your ordinance is, is, is clear about not just after two hours shifting, you need to, you know, leave the facility. I believe it's, it's written well enough to be able to enforce if they tried to introduce a new session. You can set whatever parameters you want in terms of if you'd like to give them relief in that zone for, okay, if they leave after two hours or so, and then they come back, it's okay. That's up to the, that's up to the parking committees and the councils to, to decide that. So you set the rules, the software can enforce it, but right now, I think it does say in your ordinance, you would have to, after two hours, you would have to leave that facility. You would not, you know, be able to start a new session.
And the second question is, how do we choose the company that we do this with?
The app?
There is a, you know, what I'd suggest is the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance that already vets and procures a series of vendors. So they're, they're already recommended and I believe Camden's a member of that, Audra?
We, we certainly, we can be according to our purchasing policy.
We can be, yeah, all municipalities are open to it. But it does, you know, so they've gone through that whole procurement process to save you from 90 to 120 days of trying to vet all the same items. And, you know, so we can look at those vendors and decide, I mean, and part of it too is you've got a vendor up the street in Bar Harbor, you've got, you've got one in Portland, you know, you've got one in, in, you know, go far south, it's York, York Beach. So, you know, it's not that we don't have them there, we can go out and see them and, and that sort of thing as well.
If, if, I'm sorry, Allison, you had your hand up.
So is there the 15-minute parking provision work, would there, would that be worked into this? One of the things that was appealing in the middle school presentation was the idea that, you know, all parking spots would be free for 15 minutes and only after that? Would that be?
Yes, yes, that would, and, and that's important too because, you know, some people will, will stop and then will leave, you know, temporarily and will, you know, just like in a parking garage, right? You pull in, then you decide, okay, I'm going to pull out and you never actually spent more than 15 minutes. So everyone would have a free 15 minutes before the session would, would start.
So, so does it mean, so you have free 15 minutes, but you still pay for an hour, not an hour and 15 minutes, right? The first 15 minutes are free. So you're paying a dollar for 75 minutes, for, for 45 minutes.
I don't think that's the way it works. I think the way, wait, go ahead, go ahead, John, go ahead.
You can typically, you can put the 15 on the front or the back, but I'll most put it on the front to allow quick, you know, somebody who wants to just pop in and drop off a letter with a, with a business owner or something like that, without having to pay. So you put it on the front end.
Now, how do people handle this that are not carrying around smartphones and are just not going to?
They have a credit card or, or pay cash at the machine, at the kiosk.
Okay.
You have that option.
There is a cash, there's a cash option. There's also, you know, potentially for the payment app, we could have a calling number. Let's say they don't have a smartphone, they have a flip phone, maybe they, you know, some people, you know, I think right now, we're getting close to 90%, you know, with the smartphone and 90, close to 90 with the credit card or debit card. So, but we could set up a system. There's all kinds of different workarounds on that. We are accepting cash at the pay station.
Right.
But we can do other things as well.
Just in looking at the overall pilot plan, if, if there were, this were to be approved by the board, when would this be potentially in place in Camden's landing?
So from my conversations with John, it's likely that it would be early July.
Okay, so the middle of the summer. All right. Sophie, you were next.
John, remember that we talked about the schooner issue, that those, those windjammer and schooner trips are exceeding the two-hour parking limit. Do you think in that pilot project, we could test a different zone? Because I can't remember where we, what we thought about the schooner.
Well, first of all, you got to be careful when, there, we have fishermen's reserve spots down there, we're required to, but right now, the day sales and others.
No, 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 I'm thinking of passengers. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I, I, I'm talking about people who booked their, their windjammer trips, whatever. These are over, you cannot park for two hours.
No.
So.
The trip is over two hours.
The trip is over two hours. So the idea is either we incentivize them to go to the public.
Yes.
Lots and, and, and make, you know, make sure that we signal this, or we test a schooner park. I don't know. What we, what are we going to?
Are going to be enough parking lots down there to, to give into that idea of trying to have passengers parking.
But don't leave with the windjammer cars.
I mean, I would like to maybe try like five spots where it's like a hundred dollars an hour and see if you, you know, if we have any takers, but, um, probably maybe come later.
We can play, we can play with some of these parameters, I think, but you got to be, that's not a big parking lot.
No, no, I know, but, but people do park there to go on the windjammers. No, no, I know, but, but people do park there to go on the windjammers.
They do, when they can get away with it and.
And they get, if they don't get tickets, which is only $10, by the way.
So that's the other issue, is that the ticket is not.
That's, 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 that's in our bill of work.
Maybe we should try to, we, we always talk about changing that, but.
It's kind of below the line. But Karen, you had a question?
No.
Just a question, for, I think for the gentleman behind the screen there. Is there?
Karen, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, Karen Grove, Camden resident. Is there a possibility that this could be seasonal, say, May through October, rather than year-round because of the lack of parking in the winter?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, that's what's recommended in the report, is it's only seasonal.
That sounds like a smart start.
There is, for anybody that's kind of coming into this, there is a, on YouTube, there's a presentation that was given at the middle school that kind of goes over all of this.
And the report, and, and the report, and it was an advisory committee that worked with John and, and gave a lot of input into thinking, thinking through, but definitely having it seasonally for the, the summer season, so we increase the turnover of cars and, and the traffic.
And, and Audra, we can cover the, I'm sorry, Allison, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so a couple things. So I'm assuming that, I see you're here, Randy. Did you want to speak on behalf of the, I mean, I think it would be nice to know that, I, I've, I've been able to speak with Scott a little bit about this, and he's really enthusiastic and seems like he handles it.
Scott's very smart when it comes to any of that stuff. He runs our software that is very far out of date. We, he's been nursing that along because we didn't want to buy another parking program, so we figured out what we were going to do. The biggest issue with the public landing is the two-hour trips, and they come back. So if they get waylaid, use the bathroom, they usually come back to a ticket. So, you know, we can do all this. John's been great to work with. I'm sure if we have any questions, we did get on, Audra and I, and I, Dave went down to Bar Harbor and looked at their program they have down there.
Sure.
And I really think that starting small is the way to go, and then if it works, then we look at increasing it in other areas. And I think the kiosk idea down there is great. I think the technology being able to keep track of everything.
Right.
John, am I correct that if there is a violation of a vehicle that stays over, Scott would get a alert right to his handheld?
Yeah, we can have an alert system too. Yeah, that's the beauty of the real time. So, yeah, there's a whole lot of features. I can't go through them all tonight, but yes, that's another.
I just remembered that when we were talking to the chief in Bar Harbor, that he had mentioned that, that they would get an alert on, and I think it was on their Android-type device at the time, so.
Okay. Thanks, Randy.
I think it's going to be a learning summer, but.
Is there going to be, one of the things I think John said repeatedly in the other presentation that would be very important to have of parking, two things. One was a committee, and then the other was a parking management, some person that was.
Parking manager, like a program.
Right.
Yeah, and I mean, that, the logical person would be Scott.
Yeah. I, I think the scale that we're looking at doing this is a test of, I think in-house, we can do it. I mean, it's going to involve Jody in the finance department. It's going to involve Scott having after meetings. If we're going to go nine to six, you know, there's the possibility, you know, we're going to have to extend his hours, or somebody else in the afternoon is going to have to be able to do that, so.
But those are all adjustable parameters.
But there just needs to be somebody that's really paying attention to this and, and making adjustments and empowered to notice that we forgot something, or the public education, we're.
Scott will be able to do that.
Education is going to be a big piece there.
Huge. But I think that, given the difficulty of enforcing, you know, our current system, in a lot of ways, you know, Scott's going to be saving time that he can spend to, you know, being more of a, like a concierge of the parking system on the public landing as it's new and everyone's, you know, figuring out how it works.
Public education, you know, I think we may have to put some signers there if you're going on a boat tour. It's two-hour parking. Here's where you can park for free.
And that was one thing that Bar Harbor really emphasized to us, is in the first season of everybody getting used to it, just focusing as much on trying to, you know, educate and allow people to understand it, and make it user-friendly, and less on the punitive side of things.
Right, exactly.
Somebody will figure out the.
Yeah, well, I think. There's a lot of mice to be shaken out of that, but go ahead, Allison.
Okay, and then just the, the one last thing, I guess not necessarily for Randy, but is there, would there be a way to allocate, rather than just having the revenue from this go into the general fund or as a way of?
Do anything you want with it.
In general, I'm just saying for this pilot project, like.
For the time being, what, what I would propose for how you fund it, we've got.
Oh, I wasn't thinking about that part. I was thinking about all the revenue.
It's the same, it, it answers that question too.
Okay.
So we've got a reserve fund. Is it a reserve or special revenue? The parking reserve fund. So it was set up a long time ago as a.
Oh, right.
Parking trust fund. I think it's got about $45,000 in it.
Dollars, yeah.
So that could be used for purchasing a lot of the equipment. There's, you know, we have other sources of funding because I'm thinking that, you know, we're going to have to look to the future for, if this works. But any revenue could go back into that if the select board decides that's appropriate.
At least for now. We, you want to keep it as a succinct pilot project. We're testing it out physically, mentally, and financially.
But I thought that the revenue from parking was to be used for road improvements, and you could not allocate it for general fund.
Right, you can't. And I guess this is how it would be set aside while it's just a pilot. But, you know, it's a, it's a much bigger, you know, sort of backend financial system that we'd be setting up if, if this works and everyone decides it's something that you want.
And if, if the income revenue exceeds the expenses, because initially, we're going to have a $6,000 of money, and the revenue is going to have to cover that in the reserve account, and then we can, the downstream, you're right, we can make the decisions about, especially if it gets bigger, using it for sidewalks or.
Right, and I guess my point is for.
What's the initial investment that we would need in order to be able to do this this summer?
I want to get Ray and, and Eric to comment.
Yeah, Ray and Grayson, Camden. And just a question about the parking down at the public landing.
Yep.
Is the town planning eventually to put in some electric vehicle charging stations there? And how will this system work with it?
That's a whole different.
I mean, yeah, and I would say that this would not be an ideal location for that particular infrastructure. I think we have a lot of other publicly-owned parking lots that would be good candidates for electric car charging.
Camden does not have any publicly available one. The closest one is in the Rockport side of Hanaford.
Oh, Hanaford, right.
The Rockport side, yeah. Latin Morris has one.
Is it publicly available?
That I can't tell you. There's two Tesla, there's two Tesla stations at Latin Morris. Thank you, Ray.
Another question. Can I ask something about what you approved on the grant application for the thing? Once that's written, is that going to be available for everybody to see?
Yeah, just like any other grant application.
Everything we do is public record.
Okay.
Fine, thank you.
Eric?
Yes.
So now, Eric, it's not a long, now it's time.
Thanks for hanging in there.
My name again is Eric Kangus, Camden, Maine. The concerns I have, one is because Camden's a quaint town, and I think that's going to take away from its quaintness. The other thing is, I was down there today, I usually go there, down there three or four times a week with my dog, and I saw probably about half a dozen people having lunch on one of the tables.
Yep.
And I'm not sure how many cars they drove in. It may have been two, three cars, and now you're asking them to, to, to pay. The Dog Place, Camden Dog, and Peter Oats, a lot of times, people will go there, they'll buy meals, and they'll sit down on the park benches, and they'll eat it. Now you're adding to an additional cost to those individuals on top of their meals. The last item is oftentimes, I get a text from Mark Bradstreet to buy lobster from him. He's a lobsterman. And.
Right.
I go down there, sometimes I have to wait an hour before his boat comes in. And now, a lot of times, I'll pay retail to him because I want to support the lobster, the local lobstermen. And now you're asking for additional costs, just me waiting for his boat to come in. And there's a lot of individuals like me doing the exact same thing. He'll text, say, I expect to be in the harbor since such a time. You go there and you wait. Now, Allison, you're asking me to pay money to wait to help support the local economy.
Yep.
So, so those are my, my big issues.
Thank you very much, Eric. And obviously, there's a work in process. There are many elements that will reveal their kind or ugly heads as we go through the pilot project to test these things out. Young lady to the left, she hadn't spoken yet.
Camden resident. I was at the, I was on Zoom at the parking hearing, and I'm with Mark on the character of the town. But beyond this, I thought this was a public vote prior to doing anything. And so I understand you're trying to do a pilot, but do you think it's the best time to do it in the summer? I mean, it's like, I mean, it's so busy, and people have to adjust to everything, and I, I mean, I still think local people come first, in my opinion.
Yep.
Residents.
That's exactly why we're doing it in the summer.
Yep.
But why are you doing it in the summer?
Because the idea is to, the summer season is where we have the most issues about finding parking places, and about managing our parking spaces and our traffic. This is where we have the most influx of visitors. So that's why we're doing it in the summer. The other reason is that the idea, if we were to roll out this program, is to have seasonal parking in Camden from May to October over the busiest season, so we can better manage the parking. So the, it would make no sense to have a pilot in November.
Well, what about the fall? I mean, we still have, we still have a lot of traffic in the fall.
We, so John.
And it just seems like a big, it's another like big whammo. Here we go. Let's just like do this now. And before people, I mean, people had a say at the hearing, but my understanding was nothing was going to happen until there was a boat. And I do, I do understand the pilot idea.
Mm-hmm.
But I think there were people like me and Mark and other people who said, wait a minute, you know, what about the character of the town? So it's kind of like that gets all overlooked again, and then you go right, you dive right into it. And, you know, it, it just makes people feel a little bit like, well, doesn't, anything I say matter? So I just wanted to say that. I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to debate it.
No, that's fine.
That's fine. Say it.
But I think the pilot project is, is going to be very useful to understand how it works, whether it works, whether we want it. We have to start somewhere. It's going to give us a lot of data and information.
I believe a pilot project, I'm, I'm thinking that we can approve if we want to, but a permanent project would have to be voted on by the town. Am I correct in that?
That's what you said. That's what was said at the hearing. To set up the special revenue fund. So I guess that is sort of, in a way, connected to my question. What is the, so what's the investment that is needed in order to be able to do the pilot project?
Well, this, this is the thing, because it would have to be put out to bid. We'll have to come back to you.
With the proposals to determine which one we would choose.
Right.
Can you give me, so we're making a decision?
No, I can't, I can't, I have to, I, before we even sort of go and sort of look at the equipment that's needed and the cost of that, I wanted to have this discussion because I thought that, you know, coming to you with all that information, it would give the impression that a decision had already been made, instead of having this conversation and then going away and.
I agree.
Right. I mean, I do think what we've heard a bunch was, was can't we do, can't we roll it out in some small part of town first, rather than just, you know, waiting until we have a public vote to go and do everything all at once, and then it's like, almost like there's no going back.
There's probably a thousand questions that have to be answered, and the only way to get answers to it is by doing a test case.
So we're not making a final decision?
On the pilot?
What, on?
Are you voting tonight on the pilot or just discussing?
The action item is to decide whether we want to proceed with getting proposals for a pilot project, yes.
Okay, so it's not the, that's all, it's.
That's right.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll have to.
Actually voting to spend any money or do anything at all, right?
We'll have to come back to you again to say, this is what we, you know, these are the bids we received. This is the cost. Do you approve the funding for it?
Karen, one more time, Karen. That's okay.
And I'm still Karen Grove from Camden. Just a thought that I had, because I do spend a little time down there around boats, and in the evening, in the summertime, there's anywhere from six to 10 couples who do their socialization for the day, sitting on those benches down there. The same people over and over and over again that you see. These are couples that they can't park up here and walk down there because they can't walk back up. Because of their age and perhaps infirmities. So I was just wondering, just a suggestion, is there any way to give them some sort of pass or sticker on their license plate that they don't have to participate in this for the time being?
Well, do they have handicap plates to start with?
I'm sorry?
Do they have handicap plates to start with?
No, a lot of them don't.
Oh.
One of the things we did here.
Handicap, they're just.
The system can afford almost any option we want to put in it, as I understand.
It was just a suggestion.
No, that's a good point.
These people have been down there for years.
Flexibility. And I think we're going to find some of these things out as we go through, if we go through the pilot.
Yeah.
We've got a couple of steps to go.
I just didn't want them to get caught in this.
I get it.
Well, and also, you know, it's a 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Right. It's 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
A lot of them down there are by four.
Okay.
I mean, I think sometimes people really get frustrated with not being able to find a parking spot. I know, talk, you know, talking to older members of my family, I've heard repeatedly, sometimes they would love the opportunity just to be able to, you know, like my dad would say, I would love to be able to pay $2 to be able to park in his favorite spot near French and Braun, rather than the current situation where a lot of the time, they come and can't find a parking spot at all. So I, but what I did hear in the middle school presentation was that, like this whole thing about there being infinite flexibility, and that if we are a town that, if the sort of the revenue generating opportunities are great enough, and it looks like maybe that might be the case for Camden, it does put us in a position where we could come, where we could, you know, give free passes to really any group that, that we wanted to. And that's, I mean, I hopefully, getting some data from this would help us to know whether, you know, does.
It's not a huge number of people, but they're the same ones that have been going through this.
Nick, Nick.
Year after year, after year.
Understood. That's a good, good question.
And I was just wondering if there's a little wiggle room for them.
Thank you, Karen. So Audra, what you're really looking for is, is the board to approve to go out for proposals to various vendors, and then second step would be to bring those back.
Yes.
At some point to the board, so.
Yes.
Mark?
And I'll make a motion that we approve for the town manager to go out and get submissions for proposals for a pilot project for paid parking in the public landing.
That's second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion by the board?
I look forward to the data.
Yeah. All in favor? Four, zero. Thank you very much. That's the end of our action items. We will move on to reports. Audra, I believe you inserted a town manager report, you said, or didn't you?
I did not. And a big, a big chunk of it was actually trying to draw attention to the draft final report that John provided.
Oh, okay.
And just, just another way to get information out there about this and.
Will that be on the website?
Yes. Yep, I'll post all that on the website.
Okay.
Oh, and I, I think we can release John if he's ready.
Thank you, John.
So thank you.
Probably release himself, but.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Another, another update I had in that report is that, as you know, we submitted a grant to the Economic Development Administration for the event center slash new lodge at the Snow Bowl, and we just received word that it was deemed ineligible because of.
What?
Some sort of issue with the commitment letter, the funding commitment letter, which we're really trying to understand because both, you know, the town staff, the Midcoast Council of Governments who helped prepare it, as well as.
Yep.
The, the folks at the foundation, we really can't figure out what, what about it doesn't fit their criteria. So.
And if they resubmit it?
That's what we're, we're hoping, because Vinyl Haven had a similar issue with their application to the EDA, and they allowed them to resubmit. And it just seemed really heavy-handed that, you know, there was some sort of like, you know, issue with the semantics in the letter that would have.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of scuttled the whole application. But regardless, you know, even if they decide that, you know, they, they won't let us resubmit, I think that we have a really good project. And I think that, you know, there's another, there's other, you know, cycles that'll be available to us and other sources of funding. So I think that, the good thing is it's sort of, you know, re-energized this discussion. The foundation is very supportive, and they want to help out.
Yeah.
So I think that we'll, we'll keep trying.
That was a large grant application, correct?
It was a $7 million project, so.
I thought it was six, but seven. I thought it was six, but seven.
It was big.
All right, anything else, Audra?
That's, that's my big update.
That's probably enough. Ms. Sophie, Select Board.
Yes, I have just one update. I want to give a shout out to Mike Grant of Grant Trees for helping us, he removed two ropes that were hanging from two trees at Lake Beach, and that had been bothering me because it really gave a bad image of the beach, so, Mike, thank you so much for stepping up when I asked you to do it, I really appreciate it, and the town thanks you for your service.
Mr. Ratner?
I have one thing, sad to report that somebody that's been one of the great volunteers for town is leading town, I don't know if everybody knows that Deb Dodge is moving to Virginia by the middle of this month, and she has been such an amazing participant in town politics, and she's been on the Select Board, she's been chair of many committees, she's donated time to the town meetings, she's run our town meetings, it's, it's, you know, it's a family decision, and they will miss the town and we will miss her tremendously.
Thank you, Mark.
Very, very, you know, happy for her to do where they need to go, but so sad for Camden that we're losing such a distinguished member of our town.
Thank you, Mark. Allison?
Um, yes, I was gonna try to show you guys the street tree app really quickly, but we did have a meeting of the people interested in the, let's see, Mayor Vilton, in the Conservation Commission, and that was great. We talked about some of the different things that were outlined in that document that I presented to the Select Board, and then we moved on to getting right to work with the tree group and kind of looking at how the tree people can interface with the Conservation Commission. The, the theme that came up a lot was, you know, different people that really wanted to be involved in specific conservation-related tasks, but maybe not wanting to commit to every single thing that might come before the Conservation Commission. So we, and then we had Brett, Dave St. Laurent was there too, and we presented the, much like the stormwater mapping app that we've been working on kind of internally, this tree mapping is like, you know, a similar concept but designed to be a little bit more simple and able to be used by almost like the general public or a, or a set group of people. So we had a, a small group of, we've done like two or three trainings now of people going out and learning how to put in, what we're focusing on now is choosing prospective locations, so taking these 50 trees that we're gonna plant this summer and choosing those places. And then also, what there's been a bunch of work that's been done over the past few months, which was taking a lot of that historical data that Nancy was referring to, like the tree inventories that Bart Woods did in the, in the 1990s, and digitizing all of that, they had volunteers that put that into an Excel spreadsheet, and then the people from our GIS company put that into an app. So the, basically what we have now is the beginnings of having every street tree in Camden mapped out, and we have a group of people working on adding in new locations. So the big message for everybody tonight would be looking, we're looking for people that are interested in having a street tree planted in the town right of way, in front of them. The town right of way, of course, is the town right of way, and that's not, you know, it's not private property owners really, their decision what happens there, but, and those, that's why those trees are protected that are there now, but we, to get this first round of planting done, we'd like to find people that are excited about the idea of having a tree planted in the right of way in front of their house. Yeah.
So number one, I'd love to be part of the next training, I could.
Oh, great.
Yeah, yeah, enroll me, please. Second thing, do, so, do we have a heat map? And do, are we trying to, no, we don't.
Um, well.
So my question is.
That's a broad term, you mean of.
So like, what are the streets? What are the streets?
Hotspots are.
Do we?
Literal hotspots, and we have mapped the impervious surfaces and the, no, that would be, that would be, that would require advanced equipment, that we don't. I love the idea.
I'm just trying to figure out what's the, what's the criteria that we're using to choose locations to plant trees, like, you know, where the shade will have the most impact or.
Yeah, we would, and we would love to get to that place, so right now we're focusing on in-town locations where there are sidewalks and where there are, you know, people are congregating, there are no trees, but that is one of the things that this is gonna eventually allow us to do, is having it all mapped out like this will allow us to use all of the data available too. As you can see, so all of these, all of these stars here are places where a volunteer has identified a potential tree location.
Tree.
Yeah, and then all of the yellow ones are existing trees, and that, that layer is still, a lot of things have changed since 1994, but some, some things happened, and some, you know, trees are in the wrong spot, but, you know, all the stars are like the sort of the base level of, like, somebody thought a tree should go here, that's not gonna be the, the end of it, then there's, we're gonna come back together and say, okay, out of these places, where have we identified where there is, you know, it's like low-hanging fruit, where there's a happy property owner, or, you know, maybe it's town property, and then we're gonna go through and improve the app, and, but it's been, it's been really fun, people are happy to do it, and.
When is the next training?
Maybe, I don't know if Dave wants it.
One of the things that might answer your question is that the program is gonna allow us to calculate the amount of shade over time as the trees get populated and get larger, so there's a.
Yeah, what Sophie was referring to is satellite heat tracing, which is rather expensive, but it is done in big cities.
Some of them.
This will actually show you the.
You might want to just.
So, one of the things, one of the things that the program is gonna allow us to do is once we've populated all the trees and we validate all the existing trees, and then we put in the new trees, over time we can calculate the amount of canopy cover we have, and that kind of translates into reduction in heat.
Sure.
So, I mean, you may not have the exact measurement of heat, but you can calculate the amount of shade.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah.
I've used, I've used satellite imaging in one of my projects, and, and there's different, there's different satellite images, and none of, not all of them are expensive, some of them are public data, and the pixelation is not as good because that's, you're paying for the precise pixel, but it gives you an idea.
Oh, no, and they're right, there's a lot of extrapolation that happens with.
And one of the things we've used actually in restoring green environments was the Green Index, and the Green Index gives you an idea of the heat and the water and the things like that, so.
Yep.
I can, maybe I'll do a little bit of research and see if we can get that.
Attend the next meeting.
Oh, you're, you're gonna be great.
No, but we can give you the training anytime, it takes five minutes, it's pretty, it's pretty easy.
Thanks, Dave.
Allison, do you have anything else you want to?
Yes, also, I just want everybody to be aware that on Facebook, MDOT has been heavily marketing their new form of public input, which is trying to find.
The highway.
I don't know if I dare pull up my Facebook right now during a meeting, but they, they're doing something called virtual public involvement, and one of the, and so they're, in my Facebook ads popped up, pedestrian safety improvements for Camden is one of the things that they're accepting input on until, until May 18th, and it's interesting, they go through all of this in sort of the reasons for the pedestrian crossing improvements, and all of this is stuff that came out of that Heads Up program, where a lot of this was stuff that was identified by some of us, Jamie Stone's stuff, wanting safer crossings for the kids and sort of following up with all of that, but they, what they're planning on is on Elm Street, from Park Street down to Free Street, a series of pedestrian safe, pedestrian crossing improvements, including everything from those flashing lights to bigger curb cuts, there's, there's a, like an eight-minute presentation, and.
On MDOT, sorry?
I need to find how you can get to that without.
Being on Facebook.
Without being on, on Facebook, I shared it on the town's.
I'm sorry?
Uh, yeah, I think so, but we can, we can do that, but I also noticed they have one problem, if you click on the mobile version of it, it takes you to a different virtual public involvement thing, which is more like how to involve rural municipal officials, non-metropolitan municipal officials in MDOT planning, and I was kind of like, oh, maybe a different day. But, so this is, they're accepting comments until May 18th, and it, they, the plans are available, so we should find a way of getting all the links to this on our website. The idea is that you watch the presentation at your leisure, and I'm just reporting MDOT's process here, I'm not advocating or anything like that, but there, so you watch the presentation at your leisure, and then you have to provide comments virtually as well through their, through their system. So that is that, and then the last thing is that the real-time cleanup was a success, we collected about 1,200 pounds of trash.
Is that pretty much standard for year to year?
Um, well, you know, weight is really kind of a poor metric, people like, it's because it's something to, you know, grab onto, but, you know, you end up with a couple tires and that can change things significantly. Another metric that might be interesting is they collected like 700 cigarette butts in a couple hours in the down, just around Seadog in the public landing.
That surprised me.
Um, yeah.
I got a beach ball and a bird feeder.
Oh.
A bird feeder and a beach ball.
There we go.
That was pretty good.
So, yeah, thank you to everybody that did that, and.
Keep it going. Go. Audra, just for everybody's thinking ahead, are we still planning, MDOT will be here on, on 24th or not?
Yeah, not May 24th, it's the 20th of June, I believe, is the, 21st of June, sorry.
Okay, and that's basically discuss South Route 1 project schedule?
No, so that's different.
Thank you.
So Patrick Adams from MDOT will be here to talk about, it's basically closing that gap between where their.
Oh.
Where their project ended on Elm Street.
Route 1 South, current project ends?
And where that ends, that area in between, including the stop-and-go intersection.
Yep.
So, and, and it'll pick up all those ramps that are part of the virtual public input session because, you know, everybody sort of recognized that, you know, they're gonna do a lot to improve those pedestrian crossings, but they're really being put on very poor sidewalk. So where the, you know, the crossings across Route 1 will be much improved, the actual sidewalk that people are coming from or going to is still going to be in very, very bad condition, and so the hope is that Patrick Adams is gonna come and talk about how they'd like to roll in the stop-and-go intersection with that segment of sidewalk.
Okay.
And they see that as a very good candidate for their Village Partnership Initiative funding, and that's funding that's come out of the Biden administration.
So we, we won't be addressing the Route 1 South project or Route 1 North?
Do we have a time and location for the meeting?
Well, they, during the Select Board meeting on the 21st.
Yeah, I thought it was next week, so, excuse me. June 21st is the second meeting month.
Oh, June 21st, okay.
With that, I need a motion to leave the Select Board and convene under Executive Session personnel to 1 MRS 405, 6E to discuss legal rights and duties with the town attorney.
I will make a motion that we leave the public Select Board meeting and join the Executive Session pursuant to 1 MRS 405, parentheses, 6, parentheses, A, to discuss legal rights and duties with the town attorney.
I second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, four to zero, thank you, thank you all.